Sorry, Connect COS Colorado Springs Transportation Master Plan Update.
Great, Mr. Roberts, you're up and at 'em. Please introduce yourself for the record. And your mic's on, right? It's hard to tell sometimes.
Nope, now it is.
There you go.
Thanks for helping me out. Yes, I'm Tim Roberts. I'm Transportation Planning Program Manager. I'm Housing Traffic Engineering within Public Works. In 2020, in 2021, the city adopted its first master transportation plan. In 2020, we initiated our first major update. I'm here to present the process and progress on that, on developing of that plan. Ted Richard, he's our project manager, and he'll be presenting the item for you today.
Great. Ted, you're gonna take it and take it off of Tim's shoulders, huh?
All right, I'm gonna do my best.
Okay, please introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Ted Richard. I'm with Olson, consultant here in town. Been working with Tim for a lot of years, and the city for a long time. It's my privilege to talk to you a little bit about a transportation plan update. As Tim mentioned, the last, the previous city transportation plan was adopted in 2001. So a lot's changed in the last 20 years. And we also have a unique opportunity with this plan because the city also recently adopted a citywide comprehensive plan, Plan COS. I do also want to mention that this item and the next item on your agenda that Gail Sturdivan is going to speak to about the PPRTA program. These two presentations are linked, and so we'll take questions when it's comfortable for you, but just so you know, you'll have a chance to ask either of us questions at any time. So just an outline today, we're gonna go through a little bit of background. A lot of the newer council members got most of this presentation not too long after you took office. Councilwoman Fortune, I, we would be happy to sit down with you as well and go through this in more detail at your convenience if that's something that you would be interested in. We'll talk a little bit about the public engagement process. This update to the plan is very much a publicly driven process. There's also a technical process that goes on. We've tried to create a data-driven plan, and I'll explain the reasons for that a little bit more. We'll talk a little bit about outcomes and next steps, kind of where we are in the process. So again, the planned purpose is to identify transportation-related investments that support implementation of community goals that were identified in Plan COS. And it's also to support and synthesize other relevant plans, including regional plans like Moving Forward 2045, Park System Master Plan, also mode-specific plans like COS Bikes and the Regional Transit Plan, all the way down to very granular plans like the Ivywild Plan, the Renew North Nevada Plan, and Experience Downtown. We're trying to take all those into account. One of the reasons for that is we're trying to create a more integrated planning process for the city. There are several reasons to have those plans integrated. It increases transparency for the public, which helps build trust. It also targets investments on things that matter. If we make investments that are intrinsically linked to our community goals, then we're gonna get closer to those goals. And it also reduces blind spots. This is one of my passions, is a lot of times, you know, we all live here, we've lived here a long time, we all make assumptions about things that, what's affecting transportation. And when we can have a more integrated planning process, it helps reduce those blind spots. So Connect COS is driven by a six-goal goal framework. This framework was established both from input from Plan COS as well as input we got from stakeholders very early in the process. We want to create a transportation system that is more safe, more equitable, more sustainable, more efficiently reliable, more accessible, and more connected. Because some of those buzzwords mean different things to different people, we tried to create or add some more qualifiers to those to explain what we meant. For example, sustainability is, certainly has a more commonly-used definition that includes economic, environment, and quality-of-life concerns. Safety deals with crashes, but also emergency response and personal safety. Are people, do people feel safe when they're using our transportation system? All of those things were considered. And then using that goal framework, we assess the current system to figure out where our transportation system is not meeting these goals and identify actions that would generate a high return in performance. Those are potential solutions.
Before we leave that slide, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. Where is, because I don't see it anywhere, mobility, the ability to get places in a reasonable length of time? I see reliability, but telling me I'm gonna be stuck at Woodman and Academy for eight lights every time I go through it is reliable, but it's not sufficient, right? So I don't see mobility anywhere on this transportation list of goals, so I'm confused.
So mobility in this goal framework, to a large degree, is dealt with under the efficiently reliable goal with reliable travel times. We assessed, we assessed travel times throughout the system and compared those travel times at congested times versus non-congested times, and that kind of multiplication factor, you know, if it takes you 20% longer when traffic's congested versus 1.0 when it's not congested, you know, that's a pretty significant difference. And that helped us prioritize where to make investments.
So I hear that, and I'm aware of that, but there is also a general, how long does it take me to get from point A to point B, which isn't captured by that because if it always takes me forever because we have 83 non-synchronized lights on this road, and it's not a high rush hour change, then it's never gonna rise to the level of concern. So I don't understand, and I'm sorry to be confused on this, but having been involved in the transportation area for a lot of years, I think this is a glaring omission that needs to be added because if you ask someone and you say, well, it's always gonna be crappy for you, but it's gonna be reliably crappy, that is not what they think is a good transportation plan.
So yes, I have been involved in transportation for about 38 years. And the assessment is in there. We also looked at travel times. Again, this comparison to travel times when, you know, at 2:00 in the morning versus 5:00 in the afternoon is a standard industry practice for evaluating congestion, and that is what we did.
Right, I agree. We need to have that, but we're missing the other component, which is just generically, even without rush hour, how long does it take me to get from point A to point B? And that's not captured in that. Now, maybe it just needs to be added to the fourth tag.
Yeah.
But it's not there right now.
So those slides aren't in here. I would be happy to meet with you and talk about all the detailed analysis that we did, the data-driven analysis to assess this. We looked at what we call big data sources. Streetlight is one of those that looks at mobile devices and compares travel times and travel patterns, where people are moving, how fast they're going. We also looked at another data source called Enrix that collects similar data. That's how we evaluated travel times. We looked at different speed comparisons. We evaluated what the travel time, what the travel time was versus the posted limit versus what people are actually doing. So yes, all of those evaluations were included in the evaluation.
Okay, Mr. Williams, circle back and maybe discuss this, and maybe you can look to add something to that efficiently reliable as we're going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Ted.
All right, so the status is, is we've developed an initial project list that's based on all these assessments of needs relative to those goal frameworks. We're refining that list right now as we coordinate with the PPRTA program development that Gail's gonna talk about. And we're preparing for another round of engagement that I'd like to ask for your participation in here later in the presentation.
Great.
So just a summary of the public engagement we've done. We have done a, conducted a multimodal outreach. We have had throughout the project a community advisory committee made up of community, agency, and other interests. They provide review and advice on everything we do for all of our milestone decisions. We actually just met with them recently. We've also had additional one-on-one interviews with stakeholders. This is just a partial list up here, everything from agencies to like the Black Chamber of Commerce and the RISE Coalition. This gives us an enhanced understanding of needs and issues because the answers to the problems aren't always in the numbers. Not long after this project started, we got distracted with a little thing called COVID. The project was originally conceived to have in-person engagement.
Yeah, Ted, Ms. Avala's got a question or comment.
I was just wondering how many people are, my colleagues on the DAIS know what the RISE Coalition is. And so I just want to explain that the RISE Coalition came into being around 2016. I was one of the original resident leaders on that. And there were seven community leaders and nonprofit stakeholders involved in this coalition, and it became really strong in terms of supporting southeast and attaining goals. And so it's, it's in transition right now. But during that period, it's been really effective in helping the community get their voices out there. So I just wanted everybody in the DAIS to know about the RISE Coalition, which stands for Resilient, Inspired, Strong, and Engaged, and it's in southeast. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that update. Please continue.
Thank you. So very early in the project, we did a strength and weaknesses survey that was available online. We got over 1,700 responses. There was also an interactive map of the city, the transportation system there, where we asked some specific questions and got over 600 additional comments. That may not sound like a lot for a city of our size, but when you're talking about long-range planning, from my experience, it's very hard to get people to give comments about things that are looking 20 years out. We were actually quite pleased with these results. We also had, we've had many virtual public meetings, which is not ideal, but we've continued to work with city communications to come up with new strategies, a lot of social media outreach, and other ways to try and get people involved and to give us comments. We also completed this past fall a priorities and strategies survey online. Some of the results for that, of our six goal areas, the most highly rated or ranked goal area was safety by some margin. Our other five goal areas were pretty equivalent. So this graph illustrates the average ranking for those goal areas when people rank them in their top four.
Ted, Mr. Williams, I think's got another comment or question?
Yeah, going back to the prior slide, if you would, please. The, the boundaries of where things become far, looking at the upper right-hand graph, because as I see the far southeast, the far east, the far north, those tend to be the lower areas in terms of response. What are the boundaries of those areas?
So these areas were arbitrarily defined by us. There was a, there was a map that, so people knew where they were. We were trying to disassociate it from any of the traditional neighborhoods or anything. These 12 sub-areas were, for our convenience, so that we could kind of make our analysis more granular. So they're all within the city limits. Probably six of those were downtown and right adjacent to downtown, like between, you know, on the east side, it'd be like from Union, between Union and Wasatch, maybe. I don't have the map in this presentation, but...
If you could just get it to us. Thanks.
Okay, please continue.
All right, so as I said, this was a survey also about strategies and priorities. So for people that rated, for example, their most important goal was safety. Things that they identified with or strategies that they identified with was making roadway crossings more safe for bikes and peds, intersection safety, and prioritizing projects to promote active mode short trips. Efficiently reliable, improved signal timing was one of the top-rated strategies, as well as prioritizing travel choices, or in other words, making more travel choices available, construct more grade separations. The last column, that CAC variances, that refers to our Community Advisory Council or Committee. And where their responses were significantly different than the general public, we noted those. Just because those people have been more involved with the, with the, with the project, we wanted to kind of see what was important to them that they'd heard.
And peds does mean pedestrians, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we also talked to the public about trade-offs. We'd love to, we'd love to build everything, but that's not, that's not being efficiently reliable. So we talked about trade-offs. Generally, the public, like, you know, a large part of the country today was pretty split. We have a lot of things that were kind of neutral when you weighed all the responses. In terms of what was important to them, one of the areas that showed a marked difference or a marked difference was where we travel. And most, the majority of the people wanted to make it easier to travel within Colorado Springs as to make, as opposed to making regional travel. Where we invest, they wanted to focus investments where needed for access to transportation is greatest, rather than just spreading the money evenly around the city. The other ones were more neutral, local priorities. Take better in terms of maintenance versus expanding the transportation system, that was about split. So let's go through a little bit of the...
Yeah, Ted, I think Mr. Helms has got a question.
Okay.
I do, Ted, thank you. On that particular slide, I was trying to determine, were there, in the surveys and the discussions and the evaluations, on whether it's the size or where we invest, did you go into detail down to the level of such as building overpasses on some of our major corridors and things like that, or is that too detailed?
I mean, that, that was represented in the slide before that about, that was one of the preferred strategies. We gave people kind of a laundry list of strategies and had them identify their, their top three, I believe. We didn't talk about specific corridors at this, at that time because this was a, this is trying to determine a citywide investment strategy.
Right.
As we developed the projects, and that's kind of our next round of engagement, is to talk with the people, okay, based on this public input and this technical analysis, it ends up with these kinds of needs-driven projects, and we need to engage with the public on those and...
Yeah, I think...
And see what their priorities are.
My personal experience, along with Councilwoman Ava and Councilmember Williams, is that in the PPRTA and other places, in my own personal experiences, even though they're quite expensive, the overpasses tend to solve a lot of the problems on our major corridors, where the lights create the traffic jams and stuff. And I was just curious how far down deep that those areas did come up. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll back up here, yes. Construct more grade separations, that is, that's exactly what it is. So, wow.
There we go.
Let me do that a little slower. All right, project development. So how did, how did we go about developing projects when we're talking about things like equity and efficiently reliable? Again, we use that goal framework to kind of tell us what data sets to look at. There's a lot of data sets available. I mentioned a couple of them related to traffic. There's other ones for equity. There's ones for accessibility. There's data sets that's available for all of these. We did a detailed analysis, just based on that data, to assess system condition. From that, it helped us identify certain critical corridors in the city, corridors that have more influence over that overall system performance than others. We then looked at, well, what are the specific needs in each of those corridors? Again, based on that six-goal framework, is there a need related to equity? Is there a need related to safety? And then we explored a full range of actions on how we might address those. Pretty open-thinking process, including studies. Can roadway improvements make a difference? Are there network solutions that might make a difference? Rather than just widening, you know, a specific roadway, is there, are there alternate routes that might be enhanced? And we also looked at different policy and organizational actions that might improve the system. From that, and then considering the input of other plans, we came up with a list of potential projects. Let's talk a little bit about how did we evaluate these corridors. And one thing I wanted everyone to know is when I talk about a corridor, it's not just the major roadway that connects points A and B. It's the context of the adjacent neighborhoods. It's things like trail connections and transit routes and the adjacent roadway network. So when I talk about corridors, we need to think about more travel sheds or, you know, those, those, all the ways that two different points are connected.
Yeah, Ms. Hendrum's got a comment or question?
Hi, Ted. Good to see you. Can you also speak a little bit, just at this high level, in terms of how you looked at transportation as it relates to how we're developing as a community and community development, planning, city planning, and so forth? Because this could have the disadvantage of being siloed outside of where and how we're developing our communities.
Absolutely. Great question. That's actually one of the nuances of that connected goal area. Your transportation system should be connected to the existing or the desired land uses that you have, and we took those from Plan COS. So where Plan COS anticipated significant land use changes, we took that into account as we were both assessing needs and developing potential solutions. All right, from that data analysis, we identified multiple east-west corridors. And on these two slides, this one and the next one, the map's the same, but the list is different. This, these are all the east-west corridors. Shouldn't be too big of a surprise. From Interquest Parkway on the north, Garden of the Gods Road, Austin Bluffs, Fillmore Street, Colorado Avenue, Platt, Hancock, and US 24 Fountain Boulevard. North-south corridors, Nevada, Union, Academy, Powers, and Mark Scheffel. Again, for the convenience of the analysis, we broke that up into segments. Part of that convenience is that these segments represent slightly different contexts within each of these corridors. Academy Boulevard is not the same on the north as it is on the south. The Platt Avenue Corridor Study is underway, and we all know that there's significantly different contexts along Platt Avenue as you travel from downtown out to Powers Boulevard. So then we went through and evaluated these needs, like I said. From a safety perspective, we looked at crashes, we looked at emergency response, and we looked at that personal safety element. The map adjacent to these, those corridors are weighted by how significant the need is. Equity, is the transportation system appropriate for the users that it serves? And is it context-specific? There could be high-mobility need populations or a high-transit propensity, or people that are likely to use transit, but they may not have adequate other mobility choices. We looked at sustainability from, again, those three pillars of sustainability, economy, environment, and quality of life. We looked at reliability, travel times, the poorest 30% performing roadways. We looked at also system condition, is how good a repair is the system in? Again, this accessibility, is the system intuitive, is it comfortable? And do we provide the necessary modal connections? Or connections between different modes? And how connected is the transportation system? Again, to Nancy's point, desired land uses. How connected is the transportation system to adjacent neighborhoods? And how connected is it to those activity centers that make us a community? And again, we took those activity centers as they were identified in Plan COS, the comprehensive plan. This is another way to look at the same information, but without the map. These red squares or different shaded red squares are really, those are all those different corridor segments. The darker the color, the higher the need that was identified. This helped us kind of prioritize where we needed to look at different areas for investment. For example, there's, there's some very white-shaded areas kind of in the middle to the left side of the diagram. Those are a lot of our northeastern roadway corridors, not showing a high degree of need for equity-related goals. The highlighted rows in, with the blue box towards the bottom, that's the Platt Avenue Corridor. You can see significant needs were identified in almost every one of our goal areas. So based on that evaluation of needs, we started, we started into a project development process. So for each of those relative needs, we went through and looked at each one of these corridor segments. We looked at, we tried to focus on a goal area by goal area analysis of, well, what's needed to improve performance within this corridor? For example, this happens to be the Fillmore Road Corridor. We identified things like, from a safety perspective, that we need more safe crossing opportunities for pedestrians. Intersection crashes was flagged as a high need here. This is also from a reliability standpoint. This is one of the worst-performing segments because that Nevada intersection is such a choke point. But also things like the bridge over Monument Creek is in less-than-good condition and is on the schedule for replacement or repair. From that, when we start identifying those needs very literally, we can start, often we can start stringing those needs together. Needs that are, or the solution, or a single solution might address multiple elements of need. For example, transportation investments to support the desired economic development. You know, the fact that it's one of the worst-performing segments from a choke point. We need to reduce the road as a barrier. All of those may be addressed with the same type of investment from a transportation perspective. By minimizing additional future vehicle demand on Fillmore and increasing the east-west people-moving capacity, create more multimodal connections in this corridor. So we did that, like I said, for all, all of those different corridor segments for each of those goal areas. Again, trying to, how can we maximize performance for each of those goals areas? We identified over 250 potential actions through that needs analysis and project team workshops, but we also considered other plans that had recently been adopted, like Envision Shook's Run, Renew North Nevada, COS Bikes. We also looked at regional and state plans. We took additional input from city staff that are interacting with this. transportation system at all times. And we also looked at emerging needs, like Banning-Louis Ranch, other annexation actions that may or may not happen. FRPR, if you're wondering what that stands for, that's Front Range Passenger Rail.
Ah, okay. I wondered.
So, we are, we are trying to consider all of those things, for sure. Again, over 250 projects, those were screened down. Some were consolidated, some actions were consolidated into what would be a regional-type project, either in scope, or in what the funding requirement might be. This is kind of where we ended up. The pie chart shows that we had 86 roadway-related projects. And, by the way, these classifications, it doesn't mean that those improvements would only be on the roadway. It's just, it was primarily driven by a roadway-related need. All of the roadway projects, consider the city's complete streets policy, and any of those type of roadway improvements would also, would address needs for all users. 61 projects primarily driven by active transportation needs, that's the red slice. 12 projects driven by transit mainly, and then there was additional 16 studies recommended. Of those, 76 projects are associated with multiple critical corridors. In other words, you know, if you improve Garden of the Gods, Austin Bluffs, the intersection there at Nevada, you're affecting multiple critical corridors.
Ted, can you just clarify the difference between active and roadway?
So, active is a project that was primarily motivated to address those people that walk, ride a bike, or what we call active transportation. Roadway is primarily associated with addressing vehicle congestion, travel time delays.
Okay, good. Dave, you had the same question, I think, huh? Okay. Please continue, Ted.
So, on our project website, we created, for each of these critical corridors, we created what we call these corridor portraits, which kind of summarizes the needs, you know, in very graphical format. This doesn't, obviously doesn't have all the detail, but it was trying to illustrate the needs, detailed information like, what kind of, what was the relative traffic volume, relative transit ridership, if any, and also what those needs were. The map on top-left shows the location and the, one of the, those 12, of those 12 subareas, the subareas that the project would, or that the corridor is located in. And then there's the list of projects that were, that are identified within Connect COS. And those are broken up by roadway projects, again, those active transportation-specific projects, and transit-specific projects. This is just one example. I don't think we want to go through all of these today, but... So, Connect COS is not just about projects. There are other actions that we need to consider when we think about transportation in the city. Citywide strategies, for example, EV readiness, or, you know, trans, or signal system upgrades, what's the role of transit? Also, funding strategies. There's some new funding available, and there's a lot of opportunities besides PPRTA to figure out how to invest in our transportation system. We're also working, we're currently working on some other updates that are required for this plan, including the major thoroughfare plan and the truck routes.
Sorry. Ms. Hendjim?
Yeah.
I'm looking at five different things.
I gotcha. Well, I don't want to, I want to follow the protocol.
That's good.
Yep. Can you speak to policy as, as a, as a function here in this slide, a little bit more about what policy would look like?
So, there are, there are certainly policies that affect our transportation investments, and what those might look like. It could be things like, you know, zoning, zoning and parking requirements. Those, those type of things impact what kind of travel choices people make. It could be policies, well, like the, the complete streets policy. I know the city's also working on Retool COS, which deals with a lot of this. We're certainly trying to coordinate with them on, on things that might have overlapping benefits.
Okay. All right. Continue, Ted.
One of the other things that we're looking at, because, quite honestly, because Plan COS identified a need to elevate transit to the next level, we are looking at identifying a transit vision network for the city that would complement the major thoroughfare plan. This describes a future vision for tran, for the transit system. This is not looking out five years. Again, this is looking out 20 years. What is the role of transit in the system? We feel like it's important to communicate that vision. One, so we know what we're doing as decision-makers. Two, so that developers know what the vision is, so that they can maybe align certain investments with where transportation is, or where transit might be a viable option for people to travel. So, that is a work in progress. We'll be finishing that as we finish the major thoroughfare plan, because those are, those two go so well together. Project prioritization. So, on those corridor portraits, you saw something we call Connect COS project relevancy. This is our own, I don't know if I'd call it a scoring system, but it is trying to assess, what are the benefits of each of these projects? Because different projects provide a different range of benefits, if you will. Obviously, there's a degree of need. Does the project address a very specific targeted need, or an overall need for the system? Does it address multiple goal areas? That was also a criteria in our evaluation of relevancy. And third, we looked at, well, what's the sphere of influence of a project? For example, again, using that streetlight data that looks at where people travel, we're actually able to do a pretty detailed data analysis of travelers through specific points in the city, where they, where their trips begin, and where those trips end. And from that, we can weigh what a project, for example, on, I'll use the same example, on the Austin Bluffs Garden of the Gods Nevada intersection, or where are all the people that are going through that intersection? Where do they travel from them to? And some projects have a much larger influence over our geography than other ones, and so we wanted to assess that. Really, all we're trying to do with this, because all these, as I say, all of these projects are good, because we've, they're all driven by our needs, needs compared to our goals that were established. So, some projects have the most impact for the broadest range of goals. Others address a range of goals, or have larger impact. But again, all these projects are good, it's just some are better than others. Gail's going to go over this a little bit more, as we talk about PPRTA, but I'll introduce the topic, so that we can get thinking. Connect COS and PPRTA, those are two different project lists, for multiple reasons. One of those is timeframe, on this poor, poor attempt at a three-dimensional diagram, I apologize. Connect COS is a 20-year look ahead. PPRTA III is really a 10-year program. We also have, Connect COS is what we call an unconstrained plan. What is the vision for 20 years out, when we look at transportation? Whereas, PPRTA will have a specific program limit, and we need to shape that project to, to match that, what we think are available proj, or available funds. And the other one is that PPRTA III needs to earn voter approval, for now, for the problems that people are experiencing right now. I also want to point out those gold stars, kind of on either, either side of the PPRTA bubble. We should also not forget that there are other funding opportunities available, and we need to continue to pursue those opportunities. So, this is the same thing, information just in tabular form. PPRTA list is a 10-year constrained program. Connect COS is a 20-year vision plan for advancing Plan COS. So, some projects will end up in PPRTA, and others will not, based on those funding opportunities, timing. And then there's also a whole list of programmatic projects that you'll, what we call programmatic projects, such as a missing sidewalk program, the emergency bridge, bridge fund, and other programs like that. And I think that is the end of my presentation. Any other questions?
Yeah, we got Ms. Hendjim, and then Mr. Murray. So, Nancy?
Yeah, I, and I'm sorry that Mr. Green isn't here. This might be a question for him, but I guess in terms of that vision planning, that you all have been helping the city with, I'd love to hear in, in like, one or two sentences, what the city sees as the vision for Connect COS. What's the city that we want to be from a transportation-transit perspective? What does that look like, at a really high, just a visionary level? What are we striving to become?
You're asking me on a Monday morning, after a snowstorm, but I'll do my best. Some things that, some things that we've heard is, is certainly to Councilwoman, Councilperson Williams' comments, people want an efficient system that gets them where they need to go. They don't want to be sitting at traffic lights. So, there's a reduction of waste, if you will, wasted time. But, by the same token, probably the most consistent we've, comment we've got from the beginning of the process is that people want transportation And, you know, I guess more visionary, certainly celebrating and supporting our logo as Olympic City USA. There's a, there's an active lifestyle here that, and people want to enjoy these, these great scenic attractions that we have. You know, those six key themes that were identified in Plan COS, you know, our, our neighborhoods, our attractions, all of that is very important, and it's, we've really tried to interweave those concepts within these transportation investments.
And Mr. Easton, did you want to comment, or maybe add something to Ms. Hendjim's question?
Travis Easton, Director of Public Works. I was going to succinctly put it in one sentence for you. We're going to try and not only move vehicles more efficiently, but we're going to try and move people more efficiently, in the different modes that they may choose.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that I, I knew that. I am a representative on Connect COS as the CAC, as a member of the CAC, so I have participated in a lot of these conversations, and I very much appreciate the work that you all are doing. I think it's helpful to get in the public record, if you will, that, that vision, and I appreciate that very much, Travis, the moving people, as well as cars. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Murray, then Mr. Williams, then Mr. Donaldson. So, you've engendered a lot of interest, so go ahead, Mr. Murray.
All right. I always am concerned about siloing, that you're operating, you give us the appearance that you're not in a silo, that you're talking to a great breadth, a group of folks. But I noticed in here that you talked about cutting back on the amount of traffic on Fillmore, as a specific example. Well, this council just authorized a housing development, right there on the corner of Centennial and Fillmore. All right. You talk about a 20-year out, think about the vision out, but you're using current maps. And, and current maps don't clearly demonstrate the development that we've already discussed throughout the city. Manning-Louis Ranch, south of the airport. I mean, we're talking about considerable expansion within this next 20 years, so you're going to, you're going to be outdated as, as we start to proceed. And that's, again, the concern of mine is you don't get, you don't get to see the bigger picture, and then bring the bigger picture back to us. And we're, I think sometimes, looking at technologies, we talk about the only three forms of real transportation we have. Either drive, you Uber, Uber, or taxi, or you take a bus. The bus isn't there, let's be honest. Uber, yeah, we can. Okay, so most of us will travel by car, both now and for the next 20 years, I think is what, unfortunately, how this thing is, is looking to be constructed. Okay? And then we, we add to that this whole build-out downtown, and the shuttle, and everything else, and then right in, layered above it, okay, we talked about a new transit center. I mean, I, I feel incredibly bad that we look across at a transit center here, it's, it's very non-functional, is the honest answer, or minimally functional, or whatever you want to call it. And our answer is to go across the street and build another transit center, which may or may not be the, the proper answer, but we're going to go through with it, come hell or high water. Again, I, it's a level of caution, and concern, the level of making sure that you project us what we shouldn't do, you know? Do you know these things are done? I didn't see anything about Mark Shuffel here, or Banning-Louis Parkway, you know, or any of these issues. How many people are you anticipating out in the outlying areas? How are you going to reach out and get them in here, if that's what you want to do? Okay? What are you going to do with these thousand tourists a day, that are coming in somewhere downtown, okay, to, good. And again, I need all this integrated into a 20-year plan. I've done a lot of planning for the military, and we have to think all outside the box, and, and to a point where a lot of folks just don't, don't get it. But at the same time, telling the leadership, you know, what you're doing right now is going to impact what I intend, what I think is going to happen. So, please, again, if you're talking 20 years out, let's talk 20 years out, and, and really put a nail on the map and the wall that, that helps the council make informed decisions, which is what I think in the end, all of us would like to try to do. Makes sense?
Thanks, Mr. Murray. It looks like Mr. Easton might want to have some comment. Do you want to step in, and maybe respond to Mr. Murray, or you're going to let Ted do it?
I can try. I didn't know if I was, I didn't know if there was a specific question in there or not. I was going to just say that annexations were taken in-
And again, introduce yourself, please.
Travis Easton, Director of Public Works. Annexations were taken into consideration. I can ask Ted to elaborate on that. They're, they're alluded to on, on the slide about potential project summary. So, you're right, we do have maps, but, and I have, you know, on Google Earth, I have the map of the city, but I have potential annexations all the way out there that I've added. So, we're taking into consideration those areas where we do have those potential annexations. Ted, you're welcome to add to that if you'd like.
I will try. Ted Richard with Olson. Council, Councilman Murray, they, that 20-year, 20-year outlook was included in this. We're quite a ways downstream in the process, and that probably should have been covered if I was covering the project from beginning to end. But in that early data analysis that we did, to even identify those critical corridors within the city, we project, we did a forecast traffic levels, using the PPACG Regional Travel Demand Model. We made some, we made adjustments where we thought those were warranted. We considered annexations and changing land use to forecast traffic out. So, our, our planning horizon for all the traffic forecasts is 2045. And that's what went into the analysis of needs.
Are you on the, on the mic there, Bill?
Yep. Again, I didn't see it in here. And so, you said you took it into consideration. What, what are those people going to do, then, as we build up the thousands, seriously, thousands and thousands of homes in the potential annexed areas? It appears we're going to ignore them according to your, your map.
They're, they're certainly not being ignored. A lot, what's-
Gail, did, did you want to, there she is. Please introduce yourself.
Gail Stewart, City Engineer and Deputy Public Works Director. The one thing I think may be missing, and I will provide the linkage, as Ted said, one of the outcomes that are going to be produced with this plan is what's referred to as a major thoroughfare plan. And that major thoroughfare plan is referred to in your city code, and as large developments come in, and these annexations, or these developments out east that you mentioned, the developers have some responsibilities to build some of those major corridors in accordance with that major thoroughfare plan.
All right, they're building the corridors. We're talking multimodal.
That, that's correct. And all of our street sections right now that we look at, when we talk about a street, it's really anticipating all modes. So it's comprehensive. So we have the vehicular lanes, we have multi-use paths, we may have shoulders, we may have off, off-site, or off-street bike paths to really accommodate all our modes. And then when we go through and we build these corridors, we're also setting those up to be eligible for, for transit applications as well. So those can come through and be used in our streets.
Okay. Mr. Williams, and then Mr. Donaldson.
A couple of different things. First, thank you for being here and for the presentation for the work that's been going on. I do appreciate the significant amount of effort it takes to look at all of the needs that exist. And I would note, since you referenced the Olympics, that first word of that motto, CTOS swifter or faster, kind of leads to one of the things that, that I hear from folks. You know, we talk about waiting at stoplights. It's not just the time, it's also the environment. Because cars emitting emissions that are stopped actually are really inefficient and a high source of pollution. And so it's not just time, it's also the environment and our air quality. And frankly, less frustrated drivers are less likely to make bad choices, and so it also helps safety. So all of this relates together. So I do appreciate the work that's being done. On those outlying areas, I would note that on Saturday morning, Councilman O'Malley had organized a very extremely well-attended meeting out on Mark Shuffle, talking about those issues. Travis Easton was there, the mayor was there. And the, the folks were very responsive. And, and one of those discussions along the line of Councilman Murray's question is developer giving the timeline for when some of the Banning Lewis Parkway was going to be constructed. Because I, I think when you looked at some of those, you saw the larger, thicker lines, in some cases being in some of the older parts of the city, because the city's done a better job at planning for development in the last few decades, where you see six-lane roads being built and, and four-lane roads being built as part of that coming into the city. But certainly, we do have to continue to track those. I know that even if there's no city dollars involved, there's still, part of the process for planning includes those developer-built roadways that many of us travel on on a regular basis. It's, of course, easier to do that when we have a funding source. And so something, someone coming in has the lots that are being sold that ultimately help fund the construction of those capital improvements. It's harder in existing areas where we don't have that funding source providing the income. But I just wanted to say thanks for the presentation today and, and for addressing the questions. And I know there's a lot more granular detail. They're just, as I visit with folks, that is one of the single most frustrating things people have, is I, I want to leave work, I got to pick up my kid, and I got to get to my kid's soccer game. Can I do that in a reasonable length of time? And what time do I have to leave work, going to the reliability question that you're talking about, which is such an important aspect? Because if you're not sure what time you have to leave work, you wind up being pretty inefficient on that standpoint as well. So just, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Williams. Mr. Donaldson, you're next.
Thank you, President Strand. Just a few questions. Do, do we have an estimate of what percentage of citizens who are going to work, going to the store, travel by private automobile versus any other of our multimodal options? I, I have my own guess. It's pretty high.
I don't know if I have a spec, sorry, Ted Richard with Olson. I'm not sure we have a specific answer. That's some information that we could put together for sure. But yes, we all recognize that, but the large majority of people drive cars.
And as part of this process, do you try to project that out 10 years from now? How many will be in private automobiles? 20 years from now, how much of our transportation is private automobiles? Is that part of this?
Yeah, I mean, we look at that, and, and part of that is kind of evaluating future scenarios. Certainly, if we continue to invest in vehicle infrastructure to the, to the level, that's where, that's where people will go. People travel by the easiest route possible. When we make some other investments in, in other modes, you can achieve mode shift, or provide opportunities for, for people to travel other ways. It's not like, but we also recognize, you know, this is Colorado Springs in the west, where I've lived all my life, and certainly, vehicles will remain very important.
And like, my estimate would be above 95%.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like to add to that answer. Tim Roberts, Transportation Program Manager. Within the modeling, the PPACG model, it also looks at mode split. And within their model, they, up to the 2045-year forecast, they do also predict a large amount of private vehicles as a major transportation mode.
Do you know a percentage? I, I'm guessing it's above 95%.
It's about 90, it's in the 90%, not 99, you know, the transit has a good mode split, cycling is less. Todd might have a better answer here.
Mr. Frisbee? We got all the experts in the room.
Todd Frisbee, City Traffic Engineer. I wasn't planning to get up to speak today. So Councilman Donaldson, I don't have a specific answer, but that answer can be obtained through census data. The census does a journey to work. Part of their questions they ask citizens is how do they get to work? And how, what mode do they use? When you look at that data, the last time I looked at that data, what I remember, somewhere in the high 80s of personal, using a single occupant vehicle.
Is that national data?
No, you can look it up by, by city, by region. And when I, last time I looked in Colorado Springs, it was somewhere in the, the high 80s. Yeah, that also takes into account, you also have people who drive, who carpool, right? So that's also a use of a personal vehicle. That percentage tends to be in the, the single digits. During work trips or for, by bike are somewhere around 1 to 1.5% transit. What I just want to kind of remember in 4 to 5%, it's going to add up to numbers. Also, they include in that folks that work at home as well in that percentage. So it's data that can be looked up. It's all online. I can do a quick, I'll probably do a quick query. I've done it before, and I could try to report back and see what.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, Dave, for all of us.
Actually, I'm actually proofing something the planning department will present at some point. So I can give you that figure. Based on the 2019 American Community Survey, which is the statistical sample, it was 77.8% commute to work by car.
That, that's interesting, because I think, I just think it's higher than that. I don't think we have 22% of our population riding bicycles and riding the bus here in Colorado Springs. Perhaps I'm wrong, but I mean, how many folks ride the bus on a day? I don't think that's accurate. But, and the reason I ask is
I'll do a little bit of
That's just, it's just a number. But I am curious if we're trying to project out, well, how is that going to change 20 years from now? And what impact does that have on how big the roads need to be? If we're, if we're projecting, you know, 50% of people are going to be riding on buses, or, or, I'm curious to know what your thinking is on that. And part of that is because we did split this out into a number of projects, some active, some roadway. Active is more like, my understanding is trails, bikes, stuff like that. And there was a number for number of projects. Do we have a number for dollars on that? You know what I mean? Like, what's the total dollars on roadway, total dollars on active?
Ted Richard with Olson. We're, we're still assembling the dollars for that. I will tell you, the probably around that 80% range is on roadway-driven projects.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the, the dollar amounts are appropriate based on that kind of mode split in general.
Exactly. And that's my point. We should be pouring, much pouring money into what people are actually doing, which is driving their cars.
And what, and in terms of forecasting, you know, major mode shifts, a forecast is just a forecast. But I would tell you or say that we are very conservative in estimating whether people will, how, how many people or what percentage of people will make that change?
And as somebody who used to commute by bicycle, I used to ride a bike from UCCS area all the way down to Fort Carson and back four times a week. It's not for everybody. It just can't be. The scenario where it's Councilman Williams gave, where it's someone who has to go to work, pick up their kids, go to the soccer game, can't do that on a bicycle. And it's, you can't do it on a bus, really. You, you need those, you just need your private car. And I think that's the future. And I, I worry that we don't focus enough on the reality, and we, we folk, we might focus too much on things that we would desire to happen. But practically speaking, with the weather in Colorado Springs, with our terrain, you, boy, those cars are awfully convenient. So you've answered the questions that I had as good as you can today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Donaldson. And we'll go to Ms. Henjim, and then Mr. Helms, and then Mr. Williams.
So this is, I think, a really important conversation for us to be having. And because, you know, I think you're right, Councilman Donaldson. You know, there is a reality of what people want. But I think we do have to balance that with what we need for the future. So I don't know where that fine line is. I think if we design just for what we want, we, we will continue to be in greater and greater challenges with our climate and our, our air quality and, and, and ability, equity, and ability for people to move from one place to another. So I, I think it, it's good to get the data. I wonder about that 77%. How many folks are actually working from home now? I mean, their commute is from their bedroom to their office, their home office, I should say. So I, I just think that that's an important conversation for us to be having as a city, and as we're going to be hearing later about PPRTA and transit projects. And, and I know that, that people are using woefully, underusing our transit system. And how, how you get people to use transit more from a desire base as opposed to, and in addition to a need base, is, is something that cities all over the, the country are, have been dealing with for a very long time. I just think we need to balance not just what we want, and being a car-centric culture, but also looking at what is that city that we want, what we need to be for the future that we're facing.
Okay, Mr. Helms, you're next. Mr. Williams on deck.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I'd like to introduce, and the term slugging. So Washington DC has dealt with these kinds of transportation problems for decades now. And whether we have a loop around the city, combination of car traffic, busing, train, and slugging. And I won't define it here right now, but I'm happy to throw that out there and talk to you about
And an appropriate hitchhiker.
Yes. It's a hitchhiking system that works very well in Washington DC that might be appropriate as an additional item that we could incorporate here. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Williams.
I think Nancy already covered that, which is, I suspect, part of the reason that 78% is low is, is because some people are working from home. So.
Okay, I think that wraps it up. I, I just did want to follow up Mr. Richards. This project for Connect Colorado Springs Transportation Master Plan started in 2019, correct?
I, I believe it started in December of 2019.
Right.
That's when the, the contracts were signed and we had a kickoff meeting. And then, of course, in March, things changed.
Right. And when do you anticipate it will be concluded?
Gail's going to cover a little bit of the schedule. It certainly dovetails with, with the PPRTA program, and we're trying to make the best decisions about how to put those things out. Because the hard, the challenge is, again, those project lists are two different things, and we need to be clear on what each one represents.
So can you give me a guess?
I would guess
Up, here comes Gail. Maybe this is a good transition. Is this a good transition?
I think it would be, Mr. Strand.
Okay.
Gail Sturdivant, City Engineer, Deputy Public Works Director. So to answer your question, we foresee Connect COS being wrapped up in the fourth quarter of 2022.
Okay.
One thing I think that Mr. Richard may have meant to mention is one of the future public engagements he would like to have is to work with each of the councilors and to host a town hall where you guys can be present, present Connect COS with your districts, and really have you involved in that direct engagement with the citizens. And we're hoping to be able to do that in person. Mr. Richard is also coordinating with the council's schedule to help get that facilitated. And I believe those are in May, correct? Or, okay.
So, so we're shooting for a fourth quarter of this year?
We are shooting for a fourth quarter to wrap this up. But I think that's a major milestone that I would like all of you to keep in mind.
Okay. And Ms. Johnson, if you'd read 5B into the record.